You'll stand, uh, stand for the pledge, Courtney?
I plead the allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment's silence, please. Roll call for council, please.
Ms. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Botkins.
Here.
Ms. Durbin. Dr. Felner.
Here.
Ms. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Ms. Ziegler.
Here.
Ms. Durbin did reach out earlier, um, and ask for the excuse today of somebody to make that motion. Uh, Mr. Richard?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to excuse, uh, Ms. Durbin, uh, from the council.
All right, motion made by Mr. Richard, sent by Mr. Botkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, elected officials?
Mayor O'Leary.
Here.
Auditor Satterfield.
Here.
Director of Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. Safety Service Director Ward.
All right, we had, uh, we had two, uh, we had a special meeting and a regular meeting that, uh, that minutes were sent out previously. I'm sure you all looked them over. So I get a motion to approve the first set of minutes, which is January 10th. Uh, Ms. Ziegler?
I'll make the motion to approve the regular meeting from January 10th minutes.
Motion to approve by Ms. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and just the motion to approve January 18th special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve January 18th special meeting.
Right, motion made by, uh, Ms. Frank, seconded by Mr. Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, we have an agenda in front of us today. It, uh, it does have one item on the agenda that needs added. It's, uh, ordinance 2023 dash 15. Ms. Ziegler?
I'll make a motion to add ordinance number 2023 dash 15 to the agenda tonight.
Motion to add 2023 dash 15 to the agenda by Ms. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Alt. Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yep.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Um, do I give a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Mr. Richard?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All right, motion by Mr. Richard, seconded by Mr. Botkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, let's see. We'll move into legislation then. Uh, start with, uh, ordinance 2023 dash five.
Ordinance number 2023 dash five entitled ordinance approving the submission of the application and authorizing the safety service director to accept the, accept the grant and sign all necessary documents related thereto with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources under the Nature Works Program and declaring emergency.
All right, thank you. Not sure where, what, uh...
Picnic tables.
Picnic tables, okay, thank you.
This much is $11,000. It'll allow us to buy, round it up a little bit so we get a, but that's, uh, we've talked about it before.
Okay.
I mean, it's been through committee and everything.
Where, uh, for, where, what's the location?
Uh, yet to be determined, although I think the committee members would probably say it's South Park or something or other. It's like, you know, that's really not...
That's what it was submitted to us that it said.
That was how what?
That's how it was submitted to us, what the grant document said, so...
Okay.
South Park, it is.
South Park, it sounds like.
Okay. Sounds like, I could, I, I don't know. So anyways, that's where it is, picnic table. It's a lot smaller than some people remember from previous years. It's only 11,000 and change, but I'll stay off my soapbox on that as to why that's so small. Go ahead. It has to do with the Capitol bill. The state people won't tell you that, but you've got a lot of little community projects that populate the state Capitol bill. This is funded in the state Capitol bill as well, so the Nature Works grant program has, has had reduced funding while the number and value of local earmarks have gone up, and we're, we're partially responsible for that, if you will, proliferation of local projects. So what used to be about 50,000 just a handful of years ago is now this Capitol bill cycle, we're limiting to 11,000. I don't think it, in fact, I'm almost certain no other community applied for it this year, so, and then you'll remember, I'll stop after this, you'll remember a year ago, it was a lot smaller than we thought, so it's declined, it's going downhill, and it's, it's valuable for local parks.
All right, Ms. Alt?
Is the 25% matching funds already in the part budget?
Yep, yep, yep. That even makes it worse, but it's always been that percentage.
Mr. Richard?
Yes, unless there's any other questions, uh, I think this is something that we should, uh, pass through as quickly as we can, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2023 dash five and move it on to, uh, the final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Frank. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, carry? Somebody make a motion to...
I have a motion to pass ordinance number 2023 dash five.
Motion passed by Ms. Alt, seconded by, um, Mr. Botkins, I think it's for, for this end. Do we have further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yep.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 2023 dash eight.
Ordinance number 2023 dash eight entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise pursuant to appropriate law forbids for the cash rent farming of city-owned property located at the Galleon Municipal Airport to enter into a contract for same and declaring emergency.
All right, so this is something that we do every full three, three years, four years? I'm not sure.
Three.
Every so often. Every so often.
Every three.
Every three.
I think it is a three-year contract.
Yep, and it's out by the airport, right?
Yep.
Mr. Felner?
Um, no, well, you're right. This came through finance committee, and it is, uh, on a three-year cycle, uh, city bids for, uh, an area of farmland around the airport. Um, I'm not sure who is farming this year, but he's got it for three years. I think it's different than it has been in the past.
It did change. It did change. We have a couple three.
High farm?
Yeah. It might be.
Yeah, it was. I think, I think that's what marked it, the last minute. Last year, last, last go-around is the first go-around?
No, no, the, I think it was just, it's, this contract's finishing up. There was, this was...
Three years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, we've been, we were writing it just like this when, when I rode into town.
But he was, this is his, was his first turn.
I'm sorry, you're right about that. There's been, and I think, and I suspect, or expect we'll have a couple, three different farmers.
Sure.
It's, I think it's worked for them.
Yep.
Till we put up a solar field out there.
We're done?
And we're, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna make money by the sunshine and the, and the grain crops they... So anyways, this would be a competitive bid, a couple, three guys and gals in there.
There you go. Does anyone have anything else? We'll probably need to get the bidding out as quickly as we can, I'm sure, so I don't know.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2023 dash eight. Motion to suspend the rules by Dr. Felner, seconded by Mr. Botkins. Roll call, please.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yep.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Richard?
Yes, unless there's any other questions, uh, I'd like to make a, uh, make a motion to pass ordinance 2023 dash eight.
Motion to pass 23, 23 dash eight by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Ziegler. Um, do we have any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next ordinance is, uh, ordinance 2023 dash nine.
Ordinance number 2023 dash nine, this is a final resolution, and this is for the, uh, resurfacing of portions of State Route 61 located within the Galleon Corporation limits between the Harding Way East and the Cresslin Corporation, Corporation limit, and those portions of State Route 309 located within the Galleon Corporation limits between State Route 62, what it says, and the Crawford County line, including pavement repairs, curb sidewalk, curbs, ramps, pavement markings, and structure maintenance line within the city of Galleon.
Do we need, uh, a name? Did you say City of 62?
That's what they put in their document.
It's the type of, when their document.
Oh, but it's, it's correct as it's written in their vote.
That's, that's their rule.
When they're talking about, by Mike, they're talking about, uh, by the Old East School, I'm not sure if there are ramps there, but it's that area that we're putting ramps in. They're not gonna be ramps out at Nazor Road or, or anywhere where there's no sidewalks, so that's...
Okay. Dr. Felner?
Yep, um, again, this came through finance, and as the mayor said, it's, uh, starts at about, uh, Circle K or the Old East, um, hangs a right at Natalie and out to the airport-ish area, resurfacing and all accoutrements thereof.
Yeah, out that far east and then north up to the, to the city limits, which is just, just this side of 30, yeah, it is.
It hangs a left at 60, I was, I was not sure that that was included.
Good. Yep.
Are they adding a sidewalk?
No.
No?
No. Like out to...
Like, so we still can't walk the granites, could you, without walking on the road?
Correct. No, but if you wanna add it, this is an urban paving project, and, and there's a split on the, the, um, surface cores, and anything below that, all the pavement repairs, as it says in the ordinance, and any other things that we would wanna add, that, um, is well within our authority and power. It's not included in the plan, so...
How, how do we amend that? I mean, just...
Puff up a bunch of money, maybe, I don't know, wag a wagon of gas, 100, you know, 70,000 dollars, something like that, to run sidewalks.
Just make sure you...
Yeah, you might. On sidewalks, the, the one that needs done, and we've had trouble getting the contractor line up all year long, is from Tim Hortons to the, the drive back to the bike path. That's, pretty soon they will have, the users of the bike path will have worn that down enough that they'll...
Well, then they'll know where to put the sidewalk.
It won't get much, not much survey, but any event, no, it's not included. We could include it either as part of this project or something in addition, but it's, uh, generally speaking, there's an assessment to the local folks when a sidewalk's added, which is...
I was just curious. I didn't want to, or hold.
No, I just wanted to give you a complete answer.
But I said that, so I thought I'd ask.
Sure. No.
I think behind your words, I definitely think that that needs to be...
Yeah, that's gotta... Anyways.
Anyone have anything else on this one? And Dr. Felner?
Yes, um, I would like to make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2023 dash nine. A motion to suspend the rules by Dr. Felner, seconded by Ms. Alt.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yep.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carried to suspend the rules. Ms. Alt?
If there's no other discussion, I'd like to pass ordinance 2023 dash nine.
Motion to pass by Ms. Alt, seconded by Ms. Frank. Do we have any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
All right, the next ordinance is 2023 dash 10.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 10 entitled ordinance adopting procurement policies and procedures for ARPA-specific expenditures for the city of Galleon and declaring an emergency.
This is what has the council pick it so thick, I believe?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, this also came through finance. Um, I'm gonna ask the mayor to, uh, give us the, um...
But this, this relates, okay, this relates to the money that we, uh, have in a verbal agreement with the county commissioners for some of their, uh, ARPA funds to be dedicated to the city again. It's being divided up in a, in a, to not search, as a, uh, as a, hey, feedback here. It's being divided up in a...
Sorry.
Please do. Thank you. Anyways, they're, they're being divided up on a per cap, roughly on a per capita basis, so that's that $1,070,000. This will allow us, we hope, to have, uh, the procurement of the contractors, designers, and anyone that we would use their ARPA funds, that they comply with, uh, their understanding of the federal rules, so that's what this is. Um, we have a meeting, uh, or excuse me, it's probably gonna be a phone conference tomorrow with the commissioner's office staff to talk about, uh, this document, whether it meets the standards. It really should, or meets their requirements, because it's, it's, uh, borrowed in part from U.S. irises policy that they're, they seem to be comfortable with, so, um, that's really what it involves, of, of the beginning of setting up a way to draw down funds to pay for largely would be water plant improvements, railroad street improvements.
Do you wanna add any questions?
Please pass it today so that we can say tomorrow in the phone conference that it is, you know, we've got this passed, we wanna move ahead on it.
Don't kill any more trees.
Dr. Felner? Yes, um, given, uh, what the mayor, uh, said and the, uh, where this is going to, uh, lead us with the water, uh, plan, I wanna make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2023 dash 10.
Motion to suspend the rules by Dr. Felner, seconded by Mr. Botkins. Roll call?
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Anyone have a ready to add to the discussion? Ms. Alt?
I think I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance number 2023 to make the reaction.
That motion to pass by Ms. Alt, seconded by Ms. Frank. Further discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Motion carried. The next ordinance is ordinance number 2023 dash 11.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 11 entitled ordinance amending section one of ordinance number 2022 dash 45 as amended regarding the number of authorized employees by classification in each city department and declaring emergency.
Thank you. Dr. Felner?
Yes, this came through finance. Um, the changes from, uh, that are involved in this ordinance are in the auditor's office. Um, if you look, there's the, uh, creation of, um, some more positions. This ordinance, uh, merely creates the position. It does not fund the positions, nor does it, uh, fill the positions. Um, it merely creates the, uh, uh, and gives the auditor's office some options to, um, um, help with, uh, the running of their office. Um, Mr. Satterfield, you wanna kind of expand on that a little bit?
That's pretty close. I, uh, yeah, I mean, in committee, we talked about the deputy auditor losing last year a little bit. Um, we hadn't really defined a whole lot with that yet, but it has been in front of council before to put that in the, in the statute ordinance, and I'm just asking to bring it back up for that option. And then the other one, being administrative court crew chief, um, just to give, give us that leeway. Um, I mean, we have, I'd say to reward, to, to pay somebody what, what they should be paid, or that could be, I guess, argued, but, um, there's somebody that's basically training the auditor and all new staffs coming in there and taking care of stuff, so, just, just giving us a little bit of leeway with that. I will ask though, too, in reading this, and something that just kind of dawned on me, believe it or not, looking at the police department, I don't know if you wanna change the dispatchers, but at one time, in, not too recent, in, in recent, they had five part-time dispatchers instead of four. Um, they're down to four again, but they had gotten to a position where they hired, they had a fifth part-time dispatcher. I don't know if you want to amend this, and that, I, I just saw it, Tom, so I wasn't, I just noticed, so...
They hired a full-timer, so...
Yeah, but, but yeah, but yeah, they had that fifth part-timer. So they were three full-time and five?
No.
Had, yes, it, before the full-timer left last year, there was three full-time and five part-time. I, I just something I noticed, so...
So in this committee, I asked auditor's officers about how many, um, staff are in other auditor's offices of similar sizes. Um, I attempted to do a little bit of research to figure that out, just for surrounding areas. I left a few messages and haven't heard back, and then today when I attempted to call it was at New, um, which is everyone's lunch hour, so everybody could answer the phone, um, just to kind of see, you know, what that looks like, and Mayor O'Leary brought up a good point that a lot of auditor's offices also deal with the city income taxes, so making sure that we, whenever, if, you know, I was talking to folks to make sure that perhaps they don't do their own taxes in-house, because we use RITA. Um, that was kind of my question was, is what we have already enough that is properly staffed, and there's not a lot of turnover, or do we truly need these other positions that, you know, is just gonna increase the budget of the office? So that was my concern, and I haven't figured out the answer to my own question yet, so I guess I was just saying, I brought that up in committee, and I, I have, and I'll figure it out.
All right, thank you. Ms. Frank?
My question is, uh, Dr. Felner said that this was, um, to approve, but it's not funded?
Well, the, in order, this is the first step. If, um, if people are going to be added to a department, you have to create the position first.
Okay.
So that, that's all this does.
Got it.
Um, it just creates the position. Um, whether, um, Mr. Satterfield chooses to fill one of those, then he comes to, uh, council asking for budgetary approval, you know, for that. Um, so, but, but just a creation of the positions. I, I agree, um, I think, Ms. Alt, I, I, I see what, exactly the question that you have, and I think if the, um, entire, all of the positions were filled, it would be okay, you know, but, um, I also think that we had experience in the last year of, of the struggle at the auditor's office. I think there's a couple of positions there that would really help out a lot, not necessarily the deputy auditor, um, but it, you know, for sure, another, um, position that, uh, Chris didn't occupy right now, you know, just to, um, take some of that load off. Um, so, I mean, that's what I envisioned, and that's kind of less of a, a budget breaker than filling every position created.
So let me guess, Brian, so are you saying, um, that we need four full-time dispatchers, dispatchers and four part-time, or?
No.
Is that, I'm not, three full-time and four part-time?
And what I, what I brought, what I was bringing up is that currently, currently, today, there are three full-time and then four part-time, but there have been, up until January 1st, five part-time dispatchers.
And three full-time?
Well, no, therefore, the last three or four months of the year, maybe, there was two full-times and five part-times.
Out of my lane.
So...
Right, it's like totally out of my lane. I don't, she can ask all, excuse me, miss, you can ask all the questions, but I don't, I don't understand, I mean, this, with a smile on my face. We're dealing with some big issues in the police department. This is not the time, place. I'd argue for your positions and hope that I just sit here quietly, so please don't.
Yes.
Like, I don't wanna get into this. I can't even...
I only brought it up as an...
I've got, I've got, what is that, that's a digging for gold. I got the curse of Oak Island I gotta get to. I cannot believe we're talking about this. We should be talking about the justification for the additional positions, uh, something over here, police departments.
Well, he said that he just noticed something, so I guess my question is, do we need to amend?
I don't, I, I'm with the mayor on this one, that, that the, the issue of, is the auditor's department currently in this ordinance, and I think we should stay there.
Okay.
Um, you know, and, and focus on doing more and creating these positions. Uh, doesn't have to be done tonight. It's, you know, um, something to ruminate about, but with the, um, chaos in the police department, I don't think trying to tackle that issue, I don't know if it's an issue or not, tonight is really the way to go. And I agree, Brian was making an observation, um, but I don't think, um, we need to, I don't think that would be good idea.
Okay. The, if back in the days when there were a series of reporters, I would not, I'd be less more cautious. They're in chaos in the, in the police department.
Okay.
I mean, I, it's just a word. Since I'm really bad at using hot words, I will, I'm just... Hey, can I make one other comment on this before we get, the, it would be, in my judgment, a, um, a mistake that in the context of seeing how you, what you need for proper staff in the auditor's office and, and how we afford that, which I think is really the heart of this. We really, I think, it didn't work, and so we'll just set that aside. The other thing that I, that really needs to be looked... The other thing that I, that really needs to be looked at, in particular, because Mr. Sparks will be done in his position at the end of the month, and that, the treasurer is up for reelection this year, as well as all the council seats. So, I hope that as a group that you look into, research-wise, look at the compensation. And I think it's true, there's never a good time to raise the salaries of public officials. But I don't, the, your current group of administrative people, I don't, I'm not sure if they'll want to run again, and the compensation now is, I think, something that will limit that in the future. So, to summarize, I think now's a good time to look at those positions, period, look at that, and then also look at compensation for elected officials. It's just, but it's not this, this vow of poverty that someone, it's not going to help us find talented people going forward. There's my little speech on that.
Mr. Satterfield, do you believe that staffing is, is one of the main reasons why we've had a tough time keeping up, or that it will limit you in '23 from getting things accomplished?
I think part of the answer is yes, and the other part of the answer is, is lack of trained staff. I mean, it's, you've had, I've been working, learning on the go since September of last year, and then taking over in January, and we've had, this is our third, second, this is the third administrative clerk sitting in April's chair since July 21.
And it's the third auditor we've had.
And the third auditor, so, yeah, I mean, I can't ask, I can't answer the question of, is three people enough if everybody's fully staffed, because we haven't been fully staffed and trained and functional for at least 12 months, I'll say that.
Talking about that, we had the one administrative clerk that we had, Eunice, she was off for the last three months of the year because of medical stuff, and that, I think, is kind of what put us in a tailspin.
Well.
Well, it was mounting, but, you know, so I think that, I...
Hey, may I say one more thing? It's not even controversial. I think the, eh, sorry. Ask and then start talking. During the period of time the state auditor was here, there was a fair amount of their assistance. Now, they didn't do the work for, gosh, it would have been riotous staff at the time, but they provided a lot of when something, when we didn't know how to do something, when they came to visit with a certain regularity, that Belinda, a woman named Cindy McCaffrey, and when we first started, someone who retired, whose name was Esther. Anyways, they did a fair amount of that stuff. And so, there, it needs to be thoughtful, because to say, you always did it with two, eh, it's probably not quite fair. If you had the right two people that knew the, knew, there was some cross-training, you could probably handle it with that. When we were doing more timely work, it was, I believe, because the state auditor was, was providing some of that assistance, they didn't do our job for us, that's for sure. They were there to avoid us falling backwards, so. I'm not sure what the right staff is, I'm not sure. The turnover there is a problem, and that's a whole other, it's not a, it's kind of something we'll discuss before this gets, you know, enough votes to pass, maybe it has enough votes to pass tonight.
Do you believe that the workload has created, created some of the turnover?
Eh, I'm not, I don't, yeah, I don't know, I'll offer an opinion on that. I think the April that's been discussed here, got a better job, got a job with the state. And it's just the way the ball bounces, but they, that is the second time since I've been mayor that they've done that, picked off a staff and boom, off they went. And there was a pattern, eh, it's not a pattern, sorry, but they picked off some of the better finance directors that were with the city. This has been before I was here, and offered them jobs, and so that creates, oh crap, the most competent person leaves, or a person who knows something, not suggesting that April was more competent than the current staff. But anyway, I think that's, that's an issue, as you look at this, is that, this would be, I'm not a big fan of the crew leader, but it'd be an argument for that. You don't compensate these people a little bit better, you're going to, you know, we'll be introducing ourselves to the new, to the new person. I think there's some truth to that.
I like the idea of having progression within the department that people can move, you know, have over time, can be promoted into maybe a different position. I think that that's always encouraging for any job that you move into, if you're at the top of where you're going to be, then it's hard to, it's hard to keep people because they want to better themselves. So, I think that having different, different levels of work is a good thing.
Yeah, you're getting on this one. You're getting into non-union, union. I think the reality is that the incumbent worker is, would prefer to remain in the absentee bargaining unit, rather than become a deputy auditor and utilize one of the auditor's two fiduciary appointments. So, I think that's, that's just the reality of it, I don't think that's being...
That's what I was going to kind of ask next, is what does it look like with the union to get this done, and do they have to approve the job descriptions once they're written up? I know that we did, we added that, the crew chief in the utility office, and I don't think the union had any problem with that.
They didn't have, we've had a little, couple of hiccups with them, so I won't predict that.
I've had precursor conversation with the union president, and he doesn't, he doesn't think there was going to be an issue, but that doesn't mean...
It's a great worker, this gentleman is, great worker, great future around the city guy, but he's, we'll see, here comes the starter. We'll see whether or not, when we, right now, there's a list in our office for sign-up for any city worker to sign up to work out at Taylor Road. There's four people that have signed up. So, I say that with a smirky look, a look in my face, and it's bad, the idea that they're going to sign up, two people every weekend, Saturday and Sunday, all summer long, to clean up other people's messes in our bathrooms. We'll see. So, that's a roundabout way of answering. I've been frustrated, they've not been in favor of allowing a part-time person, who honestly has worked, worked there at the water plant longer than almost everybody who's out there, excepting one person. And they, and they don't, they don't want to bring in a part-time person. So, that was another issue, back to the question, like, will the union approve it? I don't know, man. We were, we had a real good working relationship, and then something, I don't know, maybe 80 degrees, I don't think they'll get to July, but that's a challenge. It's 85 degrees in the bathroom at South Park, and some of that crap's happened down there, the Ugos are, Miss Durbin's observed, yeah, they're, they're going to love that. They're going to love that, going down there to Saturday, it's 90 degrees and cleaning that up, so, pretty, so nasty, I didn't mean to be, but that, I don't know what to tell you, Ms. Al, about whether the union will look positively. We had initial, a real positive communication with the same guy that Brian just mentioned, and they kind of did the poll of the union, and they don't want to do that, so.
Do you have anything else?
But they want two people, huh? They're not going to go down that road at all. Because, well, until you hire two people, we want all this overturned. No, you know, we're not being crappy towards them. Anyway, whether they'll approve it, they probably should, and they didn't say anything about the, about that crew leader up the street, the water in the, filling office, so. Sorry about that. We're sleeping a lot of time.
You know, the, I guess the question is, do you want to hold it, another reading, think about it, come up with, you know, Ms. Al, you had...
I know, I needed Ms. Al to tell.
I think that obviously, like, it's been mentioned that this is something that could percolate until the next council meeting and have a chance for folks to talk to Brian and such, if they have other questions, I'm sure he'll be happy to answer or give his opinion. And so, the one thing, I just wanted to point out real quick was that, the thing we also have to remember is that each individual is an individual. They have families, they have, they work a timeframe, and then they should be able to be free to be home and do things that they want to do. If, say, for example, if with the current staffing, if, as we experienced, one person goes down, it pretty much is lock the rest of the group in, unless they're going to, a short-term, that goes down for any length of time, you're back to a problem. If two people go down, it's even worse. So, the idea that add the positions would be a good idea. As Dr. Fowler indicated, this is just adding positions, this is not essentially budgeting for these positions, so these positions technically could be in this, for the foreseeable, whatever future, whatever somebody feels that the need is there. So, that's something that you might want to think about, too.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add? It's not a single, we can move on to ordinance number 2023-12.
Ordinance number 2023-12 entitled ordinance clarifying employee pay ranges for certain non-bargaining unit employees, repealing ordinance numbers 2008-54, 2008-25, 2011-17, 2013-46, 2014-28, 2016-17, and 2020-8 to the extended conflicts with provisions of this ordinance and declaring emergency.
Thank you. Dr. Fowler?
Yes, this came through finance committee as well, and as we know, we've gone through union contracts with the three unions we had?
Four.
Four. And this ordinance reflects those employees who are non-bargaining, and it's euphemistically called the Me Too Clause, but it essentially affords the same increases in pay that the union, and it happens every three years. It sets the pay ranges for all those supervisors, more or less.
Anybody have any questions on the ordinance?
Do you want, if you want to think about it, there's, the, this pass that go back at the beginning of the year, and the adjustments will be made, so.
Well, I mean, three years ago, and I think it was like tax day before the ordinance was passed, and so we've got four months of back pay to figure out, and, you know, I mean, I believe that if we are sincere in our feeling about having our safety forces and our street department and et cetera being afforded raises, then it should go also with the other employees of the city. So, if we're sincere about, you know, feeling that way toward our union employees, then I think that the goodwill should extend for the non-bargaining, and I think we should get it done.
Yeah, there's, I think, we knew this was, we knew this was going to come after, it usually...
Every three years.
Every, every time does, so it's no surprise to anyone, and I, you know, I don't believe that we had any objections to the pay raises on, on the previous contracts that were in front of us a few weeks ago, so. I don't see any reason why you, anyone have delayed the, you know, delayed the application of the increases.
Mr. Richard?
I agree with both of you gentlemen, that I think we have shown that we support our rank-and-file members of the safety forces and the non-bargaining, the, all the other folks, and I totally support them also. So, unless there's any more discussion about it, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance 2023-12 to the final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Motion made, seconded by Ms. Al. Roll call, please.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Suspend the rule. Dr. Fowler?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-12.
Motion passed by Dr. Fowler, seconded by Ms. Ziegler. Any further discussion on this ordinance?
I just have one question. Why are the police chief and the fire chief not on union when the rest of the police department, fire department, I'm just curious about that?
Oh, it's the, they're pointing through a civil service process, why they aren't? Oh, that's, we could have a long discussion about that. Captains aren't either.
Oh, I've seen that on here, too, yeah, I, I just kind of, I was just kind of curious, like, why some are, why some are not, like, why?
Discipline is one reason, one of the main ones, because you're, you're disinciding somebody within your same bargaining unit, but it's the most common thing, where chiefs and captains and some type of dependents and some...
And that's every fire department, every police department?
I don't know if it's not.
And even like at Kroger, like the managers at Kroger, usually supervisors just aren't in the union.
Well, the salary, the overtime, they're exempt instead of, so.
Okay, I was just curious.
I don't have anything really to add to that, other than, the debate is whether or not, police and fire chiefs are the only folks who are not in the union, and there's a couple of them that have civil service appointment protection. About half the people, you can go through it, that are on that list are at-will employees. Police and fire chiefs in the state of Ohio have, the law benefits them in the sense that they have civil service protection. That's what's going, that's what's been going on for two days, across the country. That's what it is.
Yeah, but basically, there's a statutory overlay on this, so the Fire Law Code controls to some extent, and that's what provides civil service protection for certain.
So, I hope that answers it. I don't, they're not, they're not in the union acting management, I think that Kroger's answer applies on this.
I was just curious. I was curious, I found that out, too, I thought, oh, that's weird, even that Kroger that is like that, but...
I don't understand.
Does anybody have any other questions before we roll call?
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next ordinance is, ordinance number 2023-13.
Ordinance number 2023-13 entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to apply for and accept in Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of State Fire Marshal, Fire Department Individual Equipment Grant and declaring emergency.
We have chief here, you want to go over this?
Carry it.
This came out of the police-fire health committee. This is a 100% grant that the fire department's going for to help replace some boots, helmets, uniforms. He did mention at the committee meeting, I just want to say this quickly, that he has a week left to send this through, to apply for this grant, so, I mean, I'll let him elaborate, but if we could pass this through tonight so that he can get that done, it would be much appreciated.
There's not a whole lot to elaborate on, thank you, but it is administered through the fire marshal's office, but that's going up into the Department of Commerce. the Fire Marshal's office, but backbone of it is the Department of Commerce. Max grant of $15,000, we're applying for 14, 940, so 15 was what he asked. We got our prices in. And it's, the general information is to replace needed backup gear. When we go out on a fire, it's days before that uniform they're wearing is able to be laundered, dried properly, back in service. So we always have had two sets of gear. Well, the last set many, many years ago, if you recall, Dr. Phil, we were here, we got a grant involving gear. That was probably eight or nine years ago. So that's the set we're using as our backup. So it's had eight years of usage. There are some sets that are showing some wear and tear. We don't, it's not like a priority that I'm coming to council asking for that money simply because we did use, make sure I say it right, not ARPA, CARES Act money. Initially, one of the first purchases was a set of gear because we were at that eight year period. So the city did purchase that through using the CARES Act money. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So we have some that's, that needs to top out, three sets specifically through our inventory, but more importantly, the boots, you know, these boots are eight, 10, 12 years old. They're starting to be a little uncomfortable, a little shady looking. So we're asking for that. So like you said, three sets of gear, 11 sets of boots, a couple of helmets, backup helmets, because they have some age to them, but it is 100% match, no city funds. If this were to be awarded, I would have to come and ask for a budget adjustment simply because this was one I didn't see on the radar, and so we didn't budget for it. But again, you'll see, if you see me, it's, it's asking for the city to front that money. We buy the stuff and then be reimbursed, so it'll still be 100%, if that were to happen.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Ziegler?
So if there's nothing else, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and make this the final reading for ordinance 2023-13 so that he can get this grant applied for.
Motion suspended rules by Ms. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Botkins. Roll call please.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins? Dr. Philner?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Have anything else? Or do you have a motion to pass? Mr. Richard?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-13.
Motion to pass by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Frank. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Philner?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Next ordinance is 2023-14.
Ordinance number 2023-14 entitled ordinance authorizing the fire chief and/or safety service director to apply for and accept a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security DHS under the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program in the total amount of up to $60,000 and declaring emergency.
Ms. Ziegler?
This one also came to, came through Police Fire Health, and this grant is a 5% match, but this grant would help them replace some hose because those do wear out, you know, when they're out during these fires. So this would help them get some much needed supplies also.
This is, you'll hear AFG FEMA, kind of the same thing. The AFG is where we go for the equipment. We've been coming here for 11, 12 years, asking for permission and getting some very good grants that have aided our department and the city, namely vehicle, good gear I just told you about, air packs, mon, credit monitors, power cops, and through employees. So that's that same grant that we're talking about, AFG FEMA. This one is for equipment. Every year when we sit down at the mayor's office and do our budget, we, we have a capital plan of some of the bigger things that we want and how far off, you know, what's the lifespan on them, how far off, you know, can maybe we afford them before we come to ask? And those high priority things or high cost things are the things that we focus in on when it comes to grant time. So it makes sense, our department needs it, it's going to save the city from having to buy it maybe in the future. And so that's kind of, and it's whole throughout the department, what do you think we need next? This one has been on for a couple of years and we, this is the one, aside from our aerial truck, that I just haven't been, had great luck getting. So we've changed it around hopefully, and it's not a huge amount, $50,000, it's grown from 51. If we went with the numbers that we applied for last year, it'd been over $75,000. That's not much, the stuff that increases the cost to outfit the one truck with five of shows, that's the big stuff, it's $30,000 off from the quote we just got today. So that part takes up half the grant already. Like you said, it is a, it's a 5% match, the money is set aside in our, in our capital plan already, the match is, we don't use that match money if we don't receive the grant, but the rest is budgeted for, so I'll entertain any questions you have. We do have a February 10th deadline on that.
Sir, if that's the thing is, maybe they'll give you $30,000?
Yeah. They'll reduce, they'll do, they'll potentially reduce it.
What you need.
Yeah. There is such a thing, it's, it's not happened.
Could happen.
Could happen.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that you put into the grants that, that you go after. It goes a long way and taking the burden off the city and the taxpayers for paying for some of the stuff that's, that's needed for your department, so. Ms. Frank?
Well, I think that, I mean, it's important to have good working equipment, so if anybody else, there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion to move ordinance number 2023-14 to a final reading.
All right, motion made by Ms. Frank, seconded by Ms. Ziegler. Roll call please.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Philner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules carried. Ms. Ziegler?
If there's no other discussion, I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance number 2023-14 to a final, or I mean, to, I'd like to make a motion to pass that.
Motion to pass, Ms. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Frank. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Philner?
Yes.
My motion carried. Next ordinance is 2023-15.
Ordinance number 2023-15 entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder therefore is provided by law for the Phase One Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project to proceed authorizing payment therefore and declaring emergency.
Very good, thank you. And I think this was added by the mayor.
This seems familiar or sounds familiar, it should be, it is. We had to rebid this. The 28,000 bucks. What happened was the estimate was increased, we had the authorization, the bid was within that, but the ordinance that was passed last August wasn't sufficient. So this is updating that estimate, rebidding it. Incidental to that is that we probably need to get this thing passed in February. The company that is fabricating the parts that we're going to bid, really bidding for the installation and repair of the clarifier, the entity that, whose product or system it is, has the right to replace that. So they're already working on specifications, getting that done. They informed the engineering firm that, I forget the exact date, February, but if we don't get confirmation, then there'll be a, a price boost to that. So that's not meant to stampede anyone, all of this stuff is going to be a challenge to fund, but it's just by way of information. So it's a rebid, it moves the allowable amount up to more closely match the engineer's estimate. So that's, that's what we have going here. I, I think we'll stay with, but possibly use all county money if that can be arranged, but if not, we'll stay with the plan that uses what's left of, of the city's ARPA allocation and some of the capital improvements fund. That's what, those are the two sources of funding that we'll use to award this contract, assuming we get an awardable bid, so.
Ms. Frank?
So when does the, would you anticipate the work being started?
When the fabrication gets done, and I would hope mid-year, the third quarter. So the company that's, that's, that's building and retooling the clarify itself, that'll probably be done and that process will start in the fall.
So the agreement, they, they won't be able to increase it again?
Right, if we get a signed contract, that'll lock that in, so we'll kind of see how that goes. So I was going to be, talk about the, the federal money that Phil is able to secure and it's like, well, it comes, it's our, our taxpayer, but the same thing applies here. This will allow us to avoid raising water rates as much as we probably will need to by plugging in quite a bit of this federal ARPA money, both our allocation and the county's. So anyway, that's all I got on that.
Thank you. Ms. Alt?
If there's no other discussion, I think it'd be best to make the motion to suspend rules and move ordinance number 2023-15 to the final reading.
All right, motion is suspended rules by Ms. Alt, seconded by Ms. Frank. Roll call please.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Philner?
Yes.
Motion carried, suspend the rules. Dr. Philner, yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-15. Motion to pass by Dr. Philner, seconded by Mr. Botkins. Any further discussion on this? Roll call please.
Dr. Philner?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to others doing this. I have my calendar in front of me. But who would like to go first to go over their, their committee digs? Ms. Alt?
The utility, the utility committee meeting is Wednesday, February 1st at 7:00 PM here.
All right, very good.
Law ordinance would be February 7th, 7 o'clock here.
Thank you. Ms. Frank?
The, the City Economic Development Airport Committee meeting, Tuesday, February 21st at 7:00 PM here.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Ms. Phil, you have something to add?
This is topic.
Oh. Is this Steel's second?
It's the committee meeting.
The 22nd, 22nd.
Normally it'd be the 15th, but we, we do it between the meetings, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Police Fire and Health will be February 16th, that's Thursday, at 7 here.
Yes.
Roger, it'll be the 9th at 6:30.
The 9th at 6:30, very good. And then ARCS is February 8th at 7:00. All right, that's, that's all of them. We do have, we did have a letter that was sent to us that I'd like to ask Ms. Phil to read.
This was actually sent to the City of Galleen Fire Department Emergency Squad, and it's from Pamela Jordan. And she said, "On December 23rd, 2022, the day of the recent, well, now the past recent snowstorm, it was necessary to call 911 for transportation to a VITA hospital. I was having trouble breathing. Of course, I was scared, but the three young men who responded that evening were so compassionate. They put me at ease and talked to me the entire time. I was impressed with their efficiency. While calming me, they were communicating with the ER staff, giving them my status. By the time I was ready for transport, I was bundled from head to, to toe so I wouldn't get hit with the minus seven degree wind blast. Finally, at the ER, they were just as efficient with info back and forth with, with the staff during the transfer. They wished me well when they left to finish their shift. These fellows gave me pride in the knowledge that Galleen had such well-qualified EMTs. Thank you for your help, I couldn't have been better cared for. Sincerely, Pam Jordan." And the, the firefighter paramedic was firefighter paramedic Gerber, firefighter paramedic Stover, and firefighter EMT Dretzke.
Very good, that's a very, that's a nice letter.
I can't believe it. I just stupefied. I mean, I think some people know Pam. I.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. Here's been a bombarder of emails here in the last week, which is a good sign. If all goes well, fingers crossed, December will be closed tomorrow. We're right on the verge, which is a good thing, reconciliations will be done, which means our work is just starting for '23. There's been a couple rumors out here recently, and I've had a conversation with Mr. Botkins, I've actually had a conversation with a couple vendors. City is not for open. We cannot pay a bill right now because '23 is not open. It's not, we don't have money, we just can't cut a check. So let's make sure that that's clarified. We made the priority that we had to get reconciliations done, we're doing that and we're moving forward. Certainly would, would welcome any conversation any of you guys have regarding the staffing ordinance. Please come see me, dwell, I'll go have a cup of coffee, come to my office, I don't care. That was meant to start some conversation and to at least give some options, so love to have that. We're desperately trying to get '23 open so we can cut checks. That was literally the conversation at the end of the day, how do we get the funds in for the reconciliations and stuff? Where do we go from here? And it's an easy answer, but it's not an easy fix, so. That's, that's our next priority, is to get things open, let the department heads get their purchase orders open, try to get some checks cut to vendors that are desperately waiting for their money. And, and then hopefully I remember how to do these reconciliations. I've actually done the last three months, so December, November, October, September, I actually sat in a chair doing the reconciliations, starting at the end of June, early July, so I've got half the year of April sitting beside me and making sure that we know where to look and how to look. And the good news is, is that we've had some hiccups, we've had to go dig and find stuff, which means hopefully when that happens again, we will be able to find it and be able to reconcile. We're hopeful, in my humble opinion, it's been a good week, week and a half. It's, you know, well overdue, but we're, we're making progress. And hopefully you're seeing that, if you have any questions on the emails that you see, the fund balances, the year end reports, if you really look at them, and I will, I'll end on this, the last part of this is cleaning up the adjustments. If you look on the payroll reconciliation and the budgetary, the operating account, adjustments at the end of those reports, there were a lot of adjustments that had to be taken into consideration for the entire year from when things were paid, wrong counts, a couple hiccups were made, I'd say learning curve, if you will, but things that were, were not done exactly correctly early on in the year that were rectified at the end of the year, it's what's made the last half year better to reconcile. Now we have to fix those in the system and in the banks. So we're, we spent probably two hours today in April, really still struggling with it, what actually needs to happen between NSA banks, operating account, payroll account, what needs to happen at the bank, what needs to happen in our system to make sure that we get, most of that's going to happen probably in June, where there's any transfers that have to be made, I can't make them in December, it's going to be made in June, we're getting the next couple days. But to end the month with zero adjustments and, and hopefully everything's going to zero out the pain. Last, if you look at, if you look at the payroll account reconciliation, it balances to zero with the adjustments and stuff. If you look at the operating account, the budgetary account, there's a difference, and that difference total is the bank account balance for the payroll account, okay? Because we transfer money over to that, so if there's $100 and the difference is zero in. Okay? Because we transfer money over to that. So if there's $100 and the difference is zero in the payroll account, the difference in the bank balance and what's in the system is $100 because that money's over in the other account. That's how it's rectified. So if we're balanced and reconciled, zero, the payroll account's zero, and the difference is going to be the balance of the payroll account. When you look at those reports down at the bottom, in the bottom, that's the goal every month. Thanks for your support, and we'll keep working.
Do you have a plan on how you're going to celebrate whenever?
There's no celebration. I would love to say there is.
Dance party. What are you doing?
You want to know what the celebration is? My vendors get paid. No, I mean, it doesn't stop. So the celebration is closing '22, opening '23, and cutting checks to these vendors that are patiently waiting for their money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And not working for a large day.
On our way to a better place. Mr. Felner?
I think really this evening, although I did want to direct your attention to an email that Julie sent over, where, today, I think?
Yeah.
About the financial disclosure form, which she's being really prompt. I mean, it's not due till May 15th, but God bless, you know, it's out there. And I've learned from times past, it's better to get it done early, so then you're not caught at the end.
Well, sometimes when you're doing your taxes and stuff like that, you're getting that stuff ready, so it's just
True enough. Anyway, that's important. That covers everybody in this room. It's looking official.
Thank you. Mayor?
There's a handful of things I could talk about. I'll just focus in on one. There's been a discussion over the last six weeks or so about state funding and the roadway out north of Brant Road. The shortest version of that story is, and I think I shared with everyone that we met Zoom meeting or whatever, with state officials. They've come back and have determined that in the absence of building the freeze center, that those funds aren't going to be eligible for reimbursement. So it's bad news. It's good news that we didn't proceed to build the road and then find ourselves $500 and some thousand dollars short. So I wanted to update on that. I'm not sure where that leaves us. We now, Michael, we now neither have a cart or a horse, but so anyways, I just wanted to update on that. There have been some drainage issues. Maybe there's going to be a question that we think we have an engineered fix out on 598, so we'll be working through that. And I suppose that's about it.
When is that building that's being built out there, like JNF, is it a spec building?
It's a spec building.
Okay.
Yeah.
It does, does.
So it is owned by the JBS, the corporation. It's really the same individuals as in JNF. But they own it. They'll be responsible for it. I've been consistent in saying what is good for Galleon is a large energy user, ideally a fairly large employer. So I've got a manufacturing, big electric user bias, but we, well, the city of Galleon will have unlimited impact on that. It would come with what type of CRA tax abatement that we would offer. And, you know, perhaps some cost. We already have ran electric out there. So we're, we can put a line out there they can tie into, so we're invested up to that. That's what it is, and it's, in my view, the absolutely ideal size. Right? Number of square feet, proper E height, 30 feet plus, so anyway, yeah.
I have one more question.
Sure.
I remember a couple months ago, we were talking about some grant funding or something to tear down some of those old buildings.
Yep.
I was wondering what's going on with that or what the update on that, anything?
It's moving along slowly. There is a consultant on board. They're selecting, they're setting up the process. So what this is, is not money to tear down buildings, but to assess their their ground field nature, how dirty they are, quote-unquote dirty. So that's moving ahead. I think high on our list, City Hall's list, is the old Elliott slash Monaco building on Wrench Avenue. And so there's, I think that's moving ahead unfortunately too slowly. But there will be plenty of money to assess properties that are have been abandoned or former industrial, commercial properties. That's where that's at.
I'm okay. Just a reminder of what snow emergency streets are, because we're getting all that snow.
Oh, I don't know. I think it's going to rain by the middle of the day.
You think it's going to rain?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not perfect, but I've got a hunch. I don't think it will be as severe. It's three inches.
I hope it's not.
I think three inches.
We already told you.
And there is, I think, I would be surprised if Matt wasn't watching this. We'll try to get that up, the streets that it applies to.
Okay. Because the snow emergency streets are no parking on snow streets. It's more than three inches, right?
Yep, 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 yep. So we'll see. Snow's on me. If it doesn't warm up, then we'll probably have quite a bit, but I don't know.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Mayor?
No, I don't know. Any other questions? Good.
What's going on?
I don't have anything. I'd like to ask for a motion here.
They're installing, yeah.
Ms. Frank?
If there's no further business, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Right. Motion carried by Ms. Frank, second by Mr. Botkins. Roll call, please. The votes, 8:15.
See, boy, you're blowing.
I was just looking to see how many, no, we were getting